Okay, so there is no objection, then the motion is approved. So for the passing of this resolution with the LGU and with authority for the mayor to enter the moment. Okay, so on, let's proceed to petitions and requests.
Propose resolution Madam Chair.
Ah, yeah.
I move for a joint resolution congratulating and commending the total diligence, you know, who share the power, the hugo, the contribution and the tolling.
Chilling, yes.
Chilling Sumanda of barangay, you know, something to add.
Yeah, okay, so we'll be separating the resolution. Of the, so joint sponsorship, any objection? The hearing then, and the motion is approved. Okay, proceed to the petitions and requests, any reading?
Petition and request number A letter from the municipal mayor and my neighbor, you know, dated June 29, 2023 informing the body that the chief executive retracted agreement in letting the Philippine Army 57th Engineering Brigade to do the Agala Road opening. They can't be seen doing operations and mobilize their equipment, yet we have taken 200 litres of fuel. In line with this, the honorable mayor requested to realign the funds worth 2,23,362 from the said project to survey and opening or piloting abroad at Tulangutan Settlement Agreement Part.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move for a joint resolution allowing the municipal mayor to realign his budget from the budget of 2,23,362. We're standing to file an. Okay, um, yeah, any second? Any second?
For the resolution, Madam Chair.
Okay, wait, wait up clarification, you know, Madam Chair. Are you close my, my phone?
Hello.
Okay, okay.
What really happened back, what was the story behind? And did we inform the 57th idea about our time to retract from the issue once or the, you know, outweigh or anything?
But if you already claimed the, you had, you stated in the letter, we have taken 20 litres of fuel already and yet there was no operation and have not yet mobilized their equipment in the area.
This is the reason why we rejected from. Did we, did we, did we, did we inform the 57th, I mean, I, I need about it?
The, property, property, but the request is, you know. And I think the, the operating though. Namang sa Facebook, pero masi private, but, I mean, contractor, or ako, ako. May mga post sa kuwan, may na post sa Facebook. Na Tagagala, na post, pero siguro lahi, na to, maybe, siguro to.
Siguro to dito sa Mitogas, kaya di.
Oo, sa Mitogas.
Oo.
Oo, sa Gala, lahi pa lang, Mitogas.
Post dito dito sa kuwan.
Oo, yung sa Gala.
Atong manisya, ang bravo. Wala na lang naaman din, diya, so tawag. Wala na, ay, lang, ito ma.
Madam Chair, I think, Madam Chair.
Yes, okay.
This is not, maybe, siguro, resolution, Madam Chair, but siguro ni, passa to committee first.
Okay, so, what's the pleasure of the body? Madam Chair. Is that here, so any second, yes, ha? Sige, Madam Chair, ako.
Okay, thank you Madam Chair. Uh, with request of the municipal mayor, Madam Chair. Uh, ako, feel ko, supak sa itin, you know, na magialign but, ang process kay, kini manggo is 20%, so dapat, uh, mangtanan lang po sa secretariat kong,
22,600,000 for donation for dam site, 100,000 purchase of public cultural materials, 66,000, 90,000 construction of makeshift platform, 190,000 maintenance of MRF, 40,000 maintenance of Tatalung, for barangay, 20,000 purchase of materials for maintenance of public market repair, 50,000 Number two, resolution number nine series of 2023 barangay hayat resolution revising 20% barangay development fund budget of 2023 amounting to 398,730 due to the implementation of barangay household backyard gardening Number three, resolution number 14, 2023 barangay Balon presented as supplemental budget number one, barangay Balon so there is some success time from the 2023 reserve plan that the previous years in the amount of 220,673.2128 counterpart for day by the linko, around 60,000 B company counterpart for barangay election, 10,000 seal repair of chainsaw type part and dress pattern, 20,673.21 and deep balance, 73,000 four letter from the mouth, we design the municipal mayor's somewhere that for we know requesting we align with the 20% development fund amounting 100,000 for high value commercial cap production two vegetable seeds procurement for the LG support to food sufficiency program and municipal ordinance number 22-11 five letter from the S Secretary, dated June 19, 2023 requesting for realignment of funds from the capital outlay of the BM SB office, 21,000 pesos for the repair of library office and another 48,000 pesos line of EVO for the procurement of three mobile phones six proposed ordinance number 23, that even introduce the regular see to Tampu Junior and ordinance mandating all civilian barangay and municipality of the day to maintain and update the database of their respective inhabitants and first subject of barangay used by household identification systems and prescribing the guidance for implementation throughout seven barangay resolution of the nine series of 2023 of Tasilas and Agustis our resolution to reform the amount of 373,605 pesos and 98 cents labor from the 20% development fund continuing by 2022 four life preservation of a pan amounting 20,000 four days of lack, 150,000 four days of medical equipment, 23,605.98 we have a rotation of water system, 20,000 and for barangay recruitment, along those amounting 100,000 the meeting started at 9:40 in the morning we are not being cleared by honorable LDC that day Honorable Tampu Junior acknowledged the presence of the members and invited Honorable Tampu gave to press agenda and asked Honorable Marty sixty doctor recommendation and suggestion for writing proposal of barangay Namo Honorable next door stated that the barangay Namo is not necessary to make a dam site since we had already at Ulampotang settlement and there are a lot of processes to update for me Honorable Talais indicated the suggestion of honorable this one and added that the barangay will set aside a budget for the procurement of vehicle for garbage collection and delivery to the dam site Honorable is indicated to the suggestion of honorable Talais Honorable Tampu is amenable for the resolution of the members and the committee decided to approve the proposal barangay Namo exempt for the land acquisition for dam site Honorable Tampu proceeds to the second agenda and recognize this unit feel over this agenda, this feel of the committee that this resolution number nine series of 2023 barangay hayat didn't pass the office, the revising of 20% barangay development fund budget must be submitted first to the municipal budget office so the committee recommended to back barangay must be checked by the municipal budget office Honorable Tampu proceeds to the third agenda, the resolution number 14, 2023 barangay Balon Honorable Tampu recognize the representative in municipal budget office this person to be today this was indicated because the committee that these documents are already in the office Honorable Tampu told the committee that these documents are already in the municipal accounting office the barangay is 10,000 pesos and is the 10,000 counterpart total of 20,000 for barangay MSK election Honorable Tampu tackled the fourth agenda letter from the mouth we designed the municipal mayor's somewhere that for we know requesting we align with the 20% development fund amounting 100,000 pesos from high value commercial cap production for vegetable seeds procurement for the LG support to food sufficiency program, municipal ordinance number 22-11 Honorable Tampu recognize this Marty's Bujungan, the municipal accounting office this Marty's Bujungan told the committee that they requested additional amount of 100,000 because they had shortened budget from their first budget amounting 200,000 Honorable Tampu told the committee that the SB did receive the supplemental budget of their request and they submitted only the letter request which pleased to attach the supplemental budget to that program the committee decided to approve this and request upon the submission of their supplemental budget and attached to the request letter to make the resolution Honorable Tampu tackled this agenda letter from the S Secretary, dated June 19, 23 requesting for realignment of funds Honorable both state and the police inside the library and asked for the recognition of documents inside the library books, dictionaries, and other reading materials and the staff assigned there this feel answered that one staff disappeared in the library and wasn't sure about the transportation of the materials inside the library as they know that the municipal library is under the S Secretary the source of fund will be get from the capital outlay of the SB PM if the SB agree Honorable Tampu told the committee that 31,000 pesos repair that our library will be get from the capital outlay of the BM SB and agree to the statement of Honorable Ogo he informed that the municipal library is not under the SB only the position under the SB then Honorable Tampu continued next right agenda, which is the procurement of three mobile phones this feel told the committee that yes, there are three mobile phones request and any concern to the municipal budget office is very flexible, it's a which is only few months ago on her term but end Honorable Tampu told the committee that very class is still allowed only few months ago on her term but end Honorable Ogo told the committee that just one period class because that's not pre-late and also it will be for our surrender that item after the end of her term Honorable Tampu in the top of this agenda, proceeds to the seventh agenda which is the barangay resolution number 10, 2023 Tasilas and Agustis Honorable Tampu asked the committee under the suggestions to the said agenda and asked the municipal accounting office representative on this staff to check for votes and ensure that it was already checked Honorable Ogo asked the committee what is the exact budget amount of the barangay for the half cut program because he noticed that each barangay had different amount budget proposal Honorable Tampu said that if the person of barangay the amount of their proposal to the said program and suggested that this program has been monitored Honorable Biso told that the staff in the mouth will monitor the communal party, the barangay, and will start this not further monitoring findings and recommendations, one, the committee approved and recommend for second reading exempt for the land acquisition for dam site, 100,000 the committee approved this request two, back to barangay and back to municipal budget office and four, three, agenda the committee approved and recommend for second reading four, the committee approved the recommend for second reading upon the submission of their supplemental budget and attached to the request letter five, the committee approved and recommended for second reading or six pending seven, the committee approved and recommend for second reading the meeting was adjourned at 10:40 in the morning motion of Honorable Tampu to the second reading committee sign approved by Honorable Tampu, Honorable Biso, Honorable Ugo, Honorable Sehira, Honorable Sumapat, Honorable Lai, and Honorable Talais Senior
Madam Chair
Yes, Honorable Tampu
Thank you, Madam Chair I'm here, Madam Chair, to make a report from committee level to secondary for deliberation aside sa resolution number nine series of 2023 barangay hayat back to barangay, to not go ah, wala ni maagisa kong impigo ang revision sa annual investment program and then, number two, proposed ordinance number 23, giving it to Madam Chair for further clarification and then, land acquisition for dam site in the amount of 100,000 for tunggunan mo to dela, disapprove, Madam Chair, sa committee level, back to barangay, so
Yeah, I would like to remind the members of Segurian, what the reviewing now is a reason we are confined to some rules, whether or not, it's beyond their power, no, to do that is it against the constitution, is it against municipal law, and it's against national law, so we should review, be there to be approval, disapproval of the it's just the realignment of funds, so we should have invited the barangay councilor Namo
During sa committee meeting, Madam Chair, we invite the main row and then, this is
So, do we have ah, is there any national law or municipal law that prohibits dam site in barangays?
Ah, Honorable
Yes, Honorable Biso
Thank you, Honorable Please, ah, ato ang kanin ko na chair, hindi ka sa community nga sa mga mga
Okay
Ato ang din na chair, ato ang
Okay, so we have a little basis okay, we have a little basis, then you state that in our resolution reminding that, ah, particular resolution of the barangay or please, our resolution is approving said item of that barangay resolution okay?
In addition, Madam Chair, no, during sa committee meeting, the main row ah, hindi sila allow to dam site, to not go ah, do uli sila sa kayo sa kong system na dam site, na ang area nga na sa Ulampotang settlement so, allow lang ang tunggunan mo ng maghi mo MRF, to not go kunung sae masunod sa MRF, mauwi ganito sa dam dam site
Yeah, okay, so that, that, ah, that reason, no, I would like to I rather to counsel no, or to advise the barangay, no, what is allowable to them? you better put it in our resolution Mr. Secretary ah, we disapprove the acquisition of that, I mean, the submission of dam site but here's our recommendation, you are rather advise, no, to put up on MRF, and so that's allowable, no? okay, so so for the motion of, ah, Honorable Tampu endorsing those items subject to the I will deliberate it by recommended by the committee for second reading and the rest for to return back to the barangay, so any second?
Second
Okay, seconded, any remarks, comments, objections? Okay, hearingan, the motion is approved Next item, next report?
Committee report, number twenty-three, that practices committee in those rules and regulations agenda, second endorsement letter from the municipal mayor's somewhere that for we know page 26, 2023 reiterating declaration of position, process server item number eight SG five under HR O integrating the same with organizational structure and stocking pattern thereby adding such to the agency's portfolio positions and operating stage throughout two, ordinance number two, series of 2023 barangay Cilomon ordinance sa mapusang buhati slowdown of speed limits, gold dome diyan dati sa eskila, dito sa 103 Tasilongo, talaga sa kasakresa The meeting started at 1:00 Monday afternoon, the player was led by Honorable Arsenio A. Sehira the Honorable Chairman of the Board, committee of Lords, our Ogo, first knowledge of persons for commercial companies and he proclaimed a coram for the committee the Chairman of the Assembly of the Meeting for that afternoon they tackled the first agenda, reiterating declaration of position, process server item number eight SG five under HR O the committee verifies the title of this position, there is a generic name of this and they found that the title of this position is correct recommendation, the committee recommended second reading for deliberation the committee considered the next agenda, the ordinance of barangay Cilomon the Chairman of the ordinance of barangay Cilomon the committee found the correction of this and ordinance of barangay Cilomon recommendation, the committee approved the ordinance of barangay Cilomon Honorable Felix Balais moved to join the committee meeting, duly signed by Honorable Arsenio A. Sehira the committee meeting adjourned at 2:30 in the afternoon signed approved by Honorable Ugo, Honorable Sehira, and Honorable Balais
Okay
Madam Chair
Yes, Honorable Ogo
Okay, move to Madam Chair, to I think for second reading, Madam Chair
Okay, duly seconded, remarks, comments, objections? Okay, hearingan, okay, ah, for second reading Next, committee Yeah, committee on committee
Madam Chair
Yes, Honorable Bujungan
Good morning, ah, kami ka committee meeting ano 'yung, Madam Chair, sa iusikay ah, availability sa Pidiya mo iulantikay atulang meeting nila, mga triwex na masyroago ilam magi po ni, insis magilang, mukilang mati na Pidiya ya, mo lang useless, maga ako binamo, iinvite ang Pidiya kay tama, Pidiya ko dali sa tuwang kuwan
Panao po ni
Oo, buki baga, kung binalang na
Your mic, Honorable Bujungan, may iko mo work?
Hello, hello Hello, hello
Okay
Ah, wala na, katanda ko meeting, kaya gamating sa schedule sa Pidiya walang, ako pwede lang, kung ta, meeting may utro, this week pa o, okay, kung binalang eh, binalang kaya ano eh, binalang magulat sa Pidiya ba eh, schedule mo po nila may magyagan?
Decided?
Walang, pinalang, kaweks na, napinding na nga, eh, kuwan, napinding na nga, ah, mga
Pwede po furnish na, issue na, na kadalamang sulap, para comment nila ang katong katong session, naging inanan sa ilang opinion or comments or more, ano na, Honorable Bujungan, mukilig sila makahatag time
Ah, di wala po sila, Madam Chair, available sila last week lang barangay na sila, today, siya, training, training, sa as in this week
Please
Madam Chair, ah, wala rin ako umaw four, five, six, seven, wala po ko available, no, eh na ako, paluap checkup pa sa Cibo malamor, maliwag na lang po ha, mong palaritan, mong na-schedule, ma, seven na siguro?
Five
Seven, oh eh, wala po ma ako sa
Pwede po, sige, maalang alam, gusto na ka checkup, di mo kayang dahil?
Okay Wala po din, wala pa, pa sa tampan
At, kung sige, maalang alam, ba five next week, amor na, sa, try ka na next week eh, ka na pa checkup, di ba, mananay ba moment?
Tuhan, tayo, Madam Chair, buo, magbabadid eh, grade, grade one, wala pa to, ako ang kuwan, masing
Ah, sige, sabit na, ha?
Iyan, masing, ma'asir na Si, salamat, Madam Chair
Pat brother
Yes, Honorable Lai
Hi, one brother, I am one of the members sa committee, Honorable Bujungan, Madam Chair kaya panggum, niabot, apunto, Madam Chairka mo iklis Pidiya, gumikan sa opinion sa among invited instead di, Cipu kulis I don't know if is the duty, baga tong ni
Duty
Baro, eh, iya, ma'butu, opinion, Madam Chairpa ah, during the committee meeting, kay, nyagi biya't ta, atong pada, katung sa barangay, Madam Chairpa na nga, imo positive, di likman, ma na may, ako sa ilan, ako sila, na, kagodan, usa, ano pa? di likman, ato mati kali, kasuha, may lang, kasuha
Bawal na, bawal na, ano, what issue?
Yes, proto, toy
Bawal ba amor, or na say na eh?
Katung, wala, Honorable, ah
Wala na sa kuwan, wala na sa draft resolution, ay ordinance na na, eh, ngayon ba?
Umotong, ma'utong, one, Madam Chair, give me
Ang may gusto i
Oo, umotong ikaripain, di ba, Honorable Bujungan
Or, na may, natungo ang isay lahat, magpa-test
Sa Pidiya
Di ba, amor, na eh, nothing, solution na
Isa, ato, Madam Chairka
Mote, mote, magkaripain sa Pidiya
Oo
Pero, katong i-re sa pulis pwede raw di, sa Pidiya, eh
Ah, yes, kay
Pwede po, makomain sila, patanong sila, oh, tru, na akila
Katung, patrak, ako, katung, patest, sa yure, motong, ginaangla, na agoy
Pidiya
Pidiya, mao pa to, Honorable Bujungan
Ah, Madam Chair
Yes, sir
Hello Ang gusto ko gumaitabo sa katung duty nga ni Atindere ah, si Sir Maron na, ma kuwan ko, no, ma positive, wala ba, tiyang, kuwan, ma positive, reso lang, yung ko na dito sa ilaha, sila na ibana, sila na mukaso, reso oo ah, simple, positive, nabugon, napatdrow na ko na siya
Ay, kaya, iswa na siya, kaya, legal question na siya, so
Walang
Pwede, ah, mukal na, mukal na, i-re sa Pidiya ah
Opinion ko, di ba, oh
Depart from other causes, per se, pero, I believe na na, i na eh na eh, permission, need no more, na, gusto na mataga Pidiya, ano katung, na ilang presence pa, na ilang approval, ba't oh, kung ano po siya
Ah, I, Madam Chair, ko na, Pidiya, may training, failures ni last week so, yun, na, sila'y babong, opposition, sa ilaha, ka na pa, kwaligis, company, workplace, na
Ah, na, sila'y, ka import, babang import See, you will try na lang for the last time Pwede na, si Jose, eh, basta, magari-gari, ka di mo umaninhan
Ah, si Sabana lang
Si Apo, eh, char, tarong si Manahara, si Amor, Lady Bo
Available na sa this week, available pa
Apo, eh, di po, Honorable Bujungan, eh basta, na kumili na eh, po first
Walang kaya timeline na, wala pa, iko po, eh
Basta, na imohan, po
Na, na, na kahang, na po eh
Isobag, imo ha, pa ba, compromise, imo han checkup, no? ah, pero, kung mabilabo lang, kuwan, di makauli po, kadi, okay o, di ka kauli, eh, di na, mukusin, mukumiti, maka-busid na, committee po wala pa, kira?
Ah, may question
I don't know, na mo, one, Madam Chair, eh, niwi
Online na pa
Niwi, one, Madam Chair, kaya this, one, may, for renewal, or katung, kuwan, hanyan, pa pamatakong, tarong pa, abas pa lagi oh, di katung sa this, eh, ah, Honorable Chairka, ala, paglinali, kay arum, magaroon, kay, basi, ganti na to, eh, kuwan, magtugon
Di na, magtiket, okay, o, magalat
Pwede na eh, po
Kuwan, tapos na ka, makuon, na kay, na, magtiket, sayang po, kay, po, 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 di, na, 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 na
Ah, sige, so, pero, kung uki ranim po, mabilabo lang, kuwan, wait na, na first
Ako, kaya, eh, po
Salamakoa, ba lang, po Atsaka, po, eh, Ma'asen
Di, Honorable, it is, ah, si, ah, si, eh, po, by bias, po, Chair, sa, committee
Mabilabo, ba't oh?
Abot aga, wala, kaborya, Madam Chair
Anyway, eh, ma'check na, pero, pwede di, mga set, next week, wa, basta, pwede check na
Ah, isang, may, one, Iber, mabilabo, di, kapiya, abo, na, eh, basta, borre, retay, Madam Chairka, paganti sila ah, I ask Iber, will it, kuwan, ako, na, kawagyo, mo to, vice chair ah, ang Iber lain, is, is it Iber lain?
O, po Alu, po kita, eh, bagante
Bagante, Honorable, bagante, Honorable, it is, it is eh
It is eh
Di, eh, po, sir
Ah, 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 okay, sir, Honorable, bagante, na, po, si na, po, si na, po, si, Honorable, tapo, matpo, Madam Chair atul, Honorable, bidan, so in case, kawalan, eh, Chairman, Madam Chair urang diyan, po, marang, kumuha ka, uwan, okay, amon, lagi, nung, to, mong, vice, ang vice chair okay, na, eh, Iber, na, Pidiya, na, dola, ang, Chairman, Madam Chair
Okay, salamat, salamat
Okay, noted, noted Malaki, committee, to report? Okay, so, if there's no other committee reports, then, and then, let's proceed with calendar of business for first reading
For the first reading, first reading, is given, number zero eight, 233, barangay Naikay resolution reforming in amount of 35,000 ah, decade from the 10% SK last time, from 2022 for the procurement of 50 pieces, plastic chairs, for the sending of quarter end, Naikay
Madam Chair Yes, Honorable, Moni Gar, SK resolution number eight, series of 233 barangay Namo I think from first to second, and third to finally, we will share in waiting our internal rules
Okay, Madam Chair
Okay, you'll see, kaya, any remarks, comments, objections? Okay, hearingan Okay, the motion is approved, approving, SK resolution 008 then, series of 233 for barangay Namo, next
ITMB, barangay resolution number 17, series of 233 Naikay, resolution to revise the 30% budget of 233 for half in the amount of 100,000 pesos, purchase of materials and siblings needed in the communal project
Madam Chair
Honorable is gone
Honorable resolution number 17, that says, 2023, 5th chapter I move from first reading to second to final, Madam Chair, leaving our internal rules
Okay, Madam Chair
Okay, duly seconded, any remarks, comments, objections? Okay
Madam Chair
Ah, yes, Honorable Tampu
Pwede verification, Madam Chair, kung revision mangguli sa annual investment program, kung notip, maningilaan, kuwan, sa, o, municipal budget, present niya, ginabas, hindi eh, si, ma's barangay hayat, ah, pa-change mangguli, sa, kung, ah, revision mangguli, ngayon, kuwan eh Madam Chair
Yeah, Honorable is gone
Madam Chair, eh, committee na lang, eh, sir second reading, second reading, second reading
Okay, committee on Committee on Resolution resolution, committee of laws, or, and, ordinance Okay, so, the Honorable is gone, amended her motion for this particular resolution of barangay Naikay and instead, refer this to committee of laws and committee joint committee of laws and ordinance
Noted, Madam Chair
Okay, so, duly seconded? Seconded?
Second
Okay, so, objections, remarks, motions approved, next
Ah, barangay resolution number 233, that's time of barangay Loxol resolution reforming in amount of 49,99 pesos, 238 ah, purchase of media and, media and prepared accessories, supplies materials and equipment taking from the 70% to 5% clarifan, CY 232
Madam Chair
Honorable lagi
Ah Resolution number 23, that's time of barangay Loxol, Madam Chair I move from first to second, second to third, and third to final, akupal leaving the internal rules, Madam Chair
Second, the video
Duly seconded, in mind, remarks comments, objections? Okay, hearingan motion is approved
Second reading
Yes, for your second reading
Ah, document, ah, document, may simang ordinance, namang, Madam Chair, ah, about the zoning regulation
Ah, what's the latest update for the review?
Ah, si, next, si, Madam Chair, I present that there is a, a ID in the UBS, and my security
See, okay, so, wala pa, na, na, katung, zoning administrator, no, sa mga corrections Okay, so, next item
ITMB, Madam Chair, ah, deeper, Madam Chair and then, ITC, ah, municipal ordinance number 23 as well if you lose pay, Honorable is gone and ordinance mandating the planting of trees by wood, big compost, before issuance of the REX license as senior high school students and the pay, as a pay requisite for the vision and those applications for, as, regular
Still, for, Madam Chair, uh, July 14
July
14
14 So, di naghi, di kaapa sa relation, kaya ano 'yung relation, 20, no?
21
Ah, eh, na?
21
Ah, 21, sige
Ta, wala po ni, eh, na, ex-5, na, na, ex, eh, barangay
Sige, ah, anyway, ma'pakasa, ano niyo?
Gumiya po, ma'pakasa, ano niyo?
Okay, sige, so, ITMB
ITMB, municipal ordinance, introduced by Opo, Moni Gar ah, number 33, that's 05, complete, due, welfare, 2, Opo, municipal, yeah, Opo, there ah, private, some, some, digital, providing funds, zero, and, and, proposals
Madam Chair, draft ordinance, ordinance, that is by me, number 33, slash, oh, five, is not ready for deliberation, or it was the secretary to be, the draft ordinance, Madam Chair Okay, so, eh, ask eh, are the, this one, is it the one? Okay, so, you have your own copy?
No, no, Madam Chair
And I got, yes